All right, so everybody, thanks so much for listening to the podcast. If you're listening to us for the first time, please subscribe to this podcast. We do have amazing people on that do many amazing things and we try to get this out to as many people as possible. So we appreciate that. I do have Councilwoman Nirva LaFortune on and Nirva LaFortune is running for Mayor of Providence. And that's my neck of the woods. I'm in Johnston, not too far away, Nirva. So I appreciate you coming on. And thanks so much for doing all you've done for the city of Providence so far.
Well, thank you so much for having me. And you know, Providence is the capital city of our state, so it's everyone's neck of the wood.
That's true. Well, I'm originally from Johnston. I went to LaSalle Academy. So I was in Providence for my four years in LaSalle, but then I moved to Florida and now I'm back up here. So I just got used to all this snow, but we'll kick this around because I do have some topics about the homeless crisis. And I know they're dealing with a lot of this, you know, in climate weather that's been going on for a while. But before we even get into that, Councilwoman, can you tell the viewers that are just meeting you right now a little bit about yourself?
Certainly. So as everyone knows, my name is Nirva LaFortune. I grew up in Providence, Rhode Island. I'm an immigrant. I came to this country when I was three. My family had to make the difficult decision to leave my home country, which is Haiti during the fall of a dictatorship. I was also separated from my family because unfortunately, we have not resolved our immigration issues. And so my parents received documentation and they didn't give it to their and documentation wasn't given to their toddler child. But I later joined them, went through the public schools. And you mentioned earlier, you went to LaSalle. We used to compete against LaSalle in basketball, soccer and track and field. And so I'm very familiar with LaSalle and it was walking distance from my high school as well. And so I grew up here and I've always been active in my community since I was in middle school from volunteering at the soup kitchens and community centers. And so after college and after living elsewhere, I moved back home to Providence and really wanted to be engaged. And started off with joining the PTOs because my kids also go to the public schools. I have a son who graduated from Classical, who was his second year in high school, college. And my daughter is in middle school, in sixth grade. And through initiatives such as implementing Barack Obama's Every Student Succeed Act, to also advocating for our students to ensure that they have social emotional support in schools, which I actually passed legislation to do so, amongst other things. I've been on city council for almost five years. I won a special election in 2017. And it's been a remarkable journey, a journey that has enabled me to really advocate for my community, my home city. And to also work with my council colleagues in the community to implement initiatives such as focusing on our schools. I'm trying to address the affordable housing crisis and finding homes for our unhoused population to real and to making investments in environmental sustainability and creating a more resilient city. And also supporting our businesses during this difficult time of COVID, which we're still living through. And so basically, I'm here because Providence is my home and I am investing in the city that invested in me.
I have to get into this. There's an inflation crisis in the country. I'm more so under the input that it's a lot of these corporations that are really greedy. And it's not really inflation. It's just them being extremely greedy, but that's another story for another time. As Mayor of Providence, if you do get elected, and we hope you do, what would you do about this inflation crisis? Is there anything you can do about the inflation crisis as Mayor?
Well, I, as a parent and someone who goes through the grocery stores and, you know, just buy basic goods. I see it every day and people are struggling just to pay their bills and also to put food on the table. I think some of the work in terms of addressing the inflation is one, working with our state legislators, also working with our federal delegates to put in some safeguards to protect our residents, but also investing in the community. In investing in community initiatives. We have centers that are ensuring that the people in the community have access to food. Making sure that people have access to affordable daycare and also people have fair paying wages. So that they can pay their bills and just meet their basic needs.
So you did touch on, and for people that are just listening, this is Councilwoman Nirva LaFortune. She is running for Mayor of Providence. And we'll talk more about this housing crisis that you touched on earlier on in the interview, Nirva. It's really a big problem, not just in this, you know, in Providence and in the state of Rhode Island, but all around the country. The houseless community is growing because people don't have, and you went through this about the inflation, the supply crisis, the job crisis that's still going on in our country because of COVID, which is still going on, as you stated. So how do we address the houseless crisis and build that affordable housing? Because the rents are extremely high, as I said, whether you're in Providence or you're in Orlando, Florida, it doesn't matter. It's out of control. People can't afford this, whether they're making fifteen dollars an hour or they're making ten dollars an hour. It's really out of control. So what can we do to help the houseless community in Providence and build that affordable housing?
Right. So it's, it's, when you look at the housing crisis, there are a couple of components that are making it more challenging for people to have access to affordable housing. One, the supply is low. We have one of the oldest housing stocks in the nation. We need to build more housing. The demand is high, the supply is low, so it's going to cost more, which is quite unfortunate. That's why I co-sponsored, I'm one of the co-sponsors of the Housing Bond. I also introduce legislation to incentivize developers and people right here in the community who wish to build affordable housing and it would be based on AMI. But we need to build more housing. We just received a significant amount of funding from the ARP funds, the federal ARP funds. When the city of Providence launched its survey in which I put out, I'm the one who passed the legislation to create the task force. That was one of the most robust, excuse me, robust community engagement process. And in the surveys, we received over a thousand respondents, more than the state survey. Folks said they need more housing. So we should be coordinating with the state to build more affordable housing. We also have models in the city that works, like an inclusionary zoning model, West Elmwood Housing. They built a community and you have people living in these housing communities with mixed incomes. And that's something that's happening throughout the nation. So we need to look at housing models that work, where we're not just throwing housing and affordable housing in certain neighborhoods and continuing to to create various levels of poverty and also segregation. So we need to ensure that we are funding affordable housing and working with our local agencies, but also working with the state. So we could have a more coordinated effort, so we could maximize the dollars and support initiatives like West Elmwood Housing, initiatives like One Neighborhood Builder, that's doing some amazing work, amongst others that I didn't mention. And then working with the Amos House. Crossroads is doing some work, but also thinking about where we're placing those housings around communities where people have access to transportation. We can have access to jobs. And also, one area that we don't always talk about too is housing for our local artists, which is quite problematic. And the art culture is part of our economic infrastructure. So we need to make sure that we're supporting them. And then also for people who are unhoused, who may not receive any type of income, to have housing for them, but also create pathways so that they have job training. They get wrapped around services and resources so that they, they too can have access to housing, but also the services that they need to be successful.
I feel like though, Nirva, that all these run together, the lack of jobs, the unaffordable housing, the inflation, and it all goes to crime, gun violence.
Yes.
Yeah, so everything's going together. And obviously, you know, the mayor has a role, but this is also the federal and the state government that has to provide the funding. There's only so much you can do as mayor. So there has been a huge crime, gun. I feel like we keep going from all these subjects that this just keeps building up because of COVID-19, lack of wages, you know, and the unaffordable housing, the inflation, everything just keeps going in a circle. But can you talk about crime and gun violence? And like I said, it does have to do with the lack of jobs, the unaffordable housing, the inflation. But how do we stop this? Because there's, you know, innocent people dying. I interviewed during the summer. There was a young girl that was coming home from seeing a friend over near Brown University. She ended up getting shot and killed. She was just a bystander on the sidewalk, wasn't into any trouble, was just standing there. I interviewed her mother and it was very sad. And, you know, we gotta stop this because it's out of control. So how do we get the crime and the gun violence under, under control rather? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So the young woman you're talking about, I know exactly who it is. I went, I met with the parents after the, you know, she lost her life, the person who was with her, who is carrying so much pain and guilt as well. And you're right, she was just a bystander. One thing I want to, you know, just remind everyone is that some of these inequities that have existed and these challenges that have existed within our nation, within our local communities, is not necessarily caused by COVID because COVID perpetually, like further escalated some of these challenges. One of the main things, though, we really need to make investments in is really ensuring that everyone has access to quality education. Because when, because when we talk about all these things, like you said, yes, they're interconnected. If people don't receive a quality education so that they can have a pathway to college or a pathway to a quality job, that determines their housing situation. That determines their income. That determines their life expectancy. So we need to ensure that we're investing in education so that every child in the city of Providence, in the state of Rhode Island, has access to a quality education. In fact, our state constitution, that language doesn't exist. We have had legislators who have put legislation to ensure that language is there. I passed, I passed a resolution at the city level and have advocated for that. And so we need to ensure that our kids have a quality education, the teachers are supported and also receiving a fair wage, because it's a difficult job, as this pandemic showed. Our families and our students have wraparound services in the schools and also investing in social emotional support. The students in Providence and other students throughout the state have come together and have advocated for more counselors in the schools. I, again, passed legislation so that we can increase social emotional support. Because kids are coming in with all types of trauma. If we're not addressing that trauma, what does it turn into anger? And so we need to make sure that we are serving them accordingly, so that when they're in school, they could focus. But also, when they go home, there are investments in their communities. They should be able to go to a community center where they can find mentors, where they can have access to job trainings, youth development programs, amongst other things. But it goes back to the leaders working together and investing in the neighborhoods. And also looking at how do we reduce guns off the streets? Sometimes, you know, when you, you think about how people have access to guns, I mean, it's, it's a fifteen-year-old. I still remember when William Parsons was shot and killed in front of PCTA. You know, and it was captured on video. So all those kids around him watched this young kid die. I went to his funeral. I mean, the image of this little boy in the coffin still haunts me. Because my son was going to school right across the street at Classical.
Yeah.
It haunts me. And the kid who pulled the trigger, this was a kid who fell through the cracks because he was kicked out of one school, waiting to be sent to another school. And in the articles, when they talk about his situations, that when they went to his room, they found all types of weapons. So no one, you know, intervened to ensure that this kid, who probably experienced his own trauma, having all sorts of like social emotional challenges, no one provided him with the support that he needed. So we lost two youth because one's life was taken away and the other one was sent to jail. So their life was taken away. So we need to invest in education. We need to invest in our youth. We need to make sure that there's more opportunities. And we can't make this a political thing, but just looking at it as just ensuring that our young people in our communities have access to a proper quality of life. And that's just making sure their basic necessities are met.
Well, not a lot of people are talking about this, Councilwoman. There's very few. But the mental health crisis out of this COVID-19 is going out of control, especially for young people that are in high school, college, whatever it may be, and those even grammar school kids. You know, this is going to be a huge crisis. And I talk to therapists all the time, interviewing them. We've interviewed people on this program and their waitlist is out of this world. And you know how much it costs to go to therapy. So a lot of these kids, their families can't afford it. And the only person they have is their mom or dad or grandparent, whoever's around. And besides that, the counselor in the school. And if they don't have that counselor in the school, then, and somebody in the family, they're screwed in plain English. It's really sad.
It is.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, if you want.
No, no, no. I was just, I was just agreeing with you that it really is. And, and also the one thing you, I want to mention too, is in certain communities, you know, like seeking out mental health support, it's stigmatized.
Right.
Um, and also, yes, yes. And so it's like, well, if I go, if I go seek a therapist and something is wrong with me, I'm crazy. And we as a society has to normalize it. That's why we have to make it more accessible. And also have therapists that look like the people that they're, that they're meeting with, right? And so what we also need to do is to hire more therapists, but we also need to get more people through the pipelines to become more therapists as well. But one of the things too, that I worked on during the pandemic, because that issue has come up quite significantly. My constituents have talked to me about it, people in the community, is that we worked on a crisis response initiative and we created a framework for a crisis response initiative in the city of Providence, in which in July, I joined the mayor, public safety, family services, as well as the Providence Center to announce that there's going to be investments to create a crisis response, some sort of diversion program within the city of Providence. And so what that means is that we would support people rather than criminalize someone for having a mental health breakdown or some sort of nonviolent crisis, we would send out a team that can stabilize the situation and hope, and also connect them to resources. Because sometimes when, you know, someone is homeless or someone's experienced a crisis, they're not given continued support. They might even be arrested. And I know firsthand, I have, you know, a family member who suffers with, from mental health. And the thought of that person having a crisis and, and being arrested or, you know, that situation becoming escalated scares me. But we need to invest in mental health support within our communities, but also in our schools.
Yeah, and policing too.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that should, that should be part of the public safety structure.
Correct.
Like that is part of public safety. That is part of healthy communities.
I agree a hundred percent. Last two questions, and I got two audience questions for you. For people just tuning in, again, this is Councilwoman Nirva LaFortune. She is running for Mayor of Providence. I want to get into this because you have discussed a lot about the schools. And, you know, I'm, I'm really an advocate of this and pushing these programs in schools, you know, shop. And for people to be trained as electricians, plumbers, obviously, we do want that option. If you want to go to college, it should be affordable. I am for free college. You know, obviously, that depends. You know, I was, personally, I'm a Bernie Sanders guy. I know we have a lot of listeners that liked him. I advocate for a lot of his policies. And I think America would be better off, another story for another day. Regardless of that, do you advocate for these policies to be put into the school system, Providence Public Schools, so that kids can learn how to be electricians, plumbers, whatever it may be? Because these are really good paying jobs. I mean, they pay a lot. I mean, anybody knows that if any of these plumbers, electricians come to your house, you're going to be whipping, whipping out the dollar bills for these people. So there's not a lot of that around the country, but how, what programs would you put besides maybe some sort of training programs? Because I think that, you know, a lot of these will help a lot of these kids that maybe they don't have, they don't want to go to college or they can't afford to go to college and they have these programs that can really help them get good paying jobs. That'll help their families and them be successful in life.
Well, absolutely. So the whole concept of even like PCTA, Providence Career Technical School, was supposed to be like this technical education. And also just creating options, providing options for our students. When I went to high school, I went to Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant was, I had magnet programs. There was the Health Academy. And by the time you graduated, you can, you can actually take the state test to become a certified nursing assistant or, you know, LPN. They had the Business Academy. They had the Teacher Academy. They had like a computer, like science program. Remember Central also had some technical aspects to it. We do need that. I mean, in the state of Rhode Island, we have the electric boat industry. We should have a pipeline directly from our public schools, in all our public schools, in high school, public high schools, that can create a pipeline into those jobs, which you don't need a college degree, but you will make a decent wage. A living, a livable wage that could support yourself as well as your family. So I agree. I think that we need to ensure that everyone has opportunities. I'm always going to be an advocate, advocate of education and higher education. I work full-time in higher education as an administrator and advisor. But I think all our young people deserve options. So if college is not for you, then you should be able to become an electrician. And there are, you know, electricians, those blue collar jobs that make more than the white collar jobs. And so, and there are folks who are great with their hands. And it's a skill. It's a form of art and even our artists. And so part of it is also creating those pipelines. We should have our high schools, like Hope High School had the Arts Academy. PCTA can have a strong partnership with Electric Boat, amongst other of our schools. But I do agree that we can create more of those programs and also apprenticeship programs. One of the things I'm looking at doing as mayor is also to tap into the food hospitality industry and to create, create some sort of apprenticeship program where our young people in high school who are interested in hotel management or interested in becoming a chef or working in the restaurants, we can start training them in high school. They can have mentors during the summer. They can work in those industries, make a little bit of money, get exposed. So there are definitely a lot of opportunities or even work at some of our local farms to, to, to look at some food security initiatives. So there's a lot here and there's a lot that can be done.
I agree with the internship aspect that you're talking about. I, I think it needs to be done. It can help kids really achieve to the greatest potential that they can get to. I have to go into this, as a person that went to college in Florida, there's a lot of craziness going down there. And especially with the school system, we are seeing, but it's not just in Florida, it's all around the country. They're trying to pass all these laws. There's people running for school board that are a little crazy now. But regardless of the point, they are pushing a lot of stuff. And we've heard this by people that are probably going to run for president with the CRT. We saw in Florida with their passing a law that you can't talk about, you know, if you're LBGTQ in the classroom. It's really sick to me personally, my opinion. As far as CRT, you know, what is your opinion on that? My opinion is that we need to learn about our country's history. I think we should be talking about history in the classroom. Are you have an opinion on this, Councilwoman? What, what do you think?
Well, CRT is a little bit more complicated because with CRT, it's a deep dive and examination of race and racism within all the structures of society. And to get to the level of studying CRT, it's a scholarly level of studying. However, race and racism is something that we see throughout course of history. And we can't deny our young people access to the full history of our country. Our young people need to understand, you know, there were people like Ruby, I can't even speak, Ruby Bridges, right? Where, you know, we always see that image of this little girl with these federal agents who are walking into the schools. So when they're in these spaces, they understand the, the history that's behind it to be able to diversify our schools. You can't teach history without also making sure that we're teaching African-American and black history, because that is history. Especially the history of a country where the, the very foundation of the country was built on the backs of enslaved people. And so anyone who wants to erase that or anyone who wants to silence people's identity, I think that is a problem. And we're not developing, and if you're trying to do that, then you're preventing educators for, from providing our young people with the history and knowledge and information that they need to be critical thinkers, to learn to accept all people and to understand the root cause of the societal issues that exist today so that they can think about ways to address them. And also, if we want to continue to create a, if we want to see a nation where people can coexist and support one another and respect one another, we need to be able to teach about the differences and, and understand that those differences is what makes us a united nation. And so if you are going to, again, silence folks, if you're going to omit critical aspects of the history, you take all that away. And it's also completely unfair to our young people in, in our communities. And that's why we're seeing the rise of all this hate and white nationalism and neo-Nazis, you know, attacking innocent people because they're trying to change the history that exists.
Yeah, they're going after Native Americans, African-Americans, Asians. It's, it's really sad.
Immigrants, yeah.
Right. It's really sad what's going on in our country. But last question, we, and then I want to have those two audience questions, but last question for me. As far as community policing goes, obviously, I'm sure you're for that. And the social worker aspect of, you know, if we do have those mental health issues, I know you touched on that a little earlier in the broadcast. What else can we do to make sure there's not a lot of police violence? Because there has been a big turn of events. Obviously, we saw in 2020 with the George Floyd. You know, many other issues as far as police violence with African-Americans in general. How can we drum that down in Providence? You know, my thing is, you know, get these police in the schools to talking with the kids. Get policemen in neighborhoods, whether it's an Asian neighborhood, African-American neighborhood, white neighborhood, that look like these people. Recruit people like them. And that will, you know, cut down on all this police brutality nonsense that's going on in our country. Is that what you would do or any, what ideas do you have to make sure that we get down on this police brutality, get rid of it?
So the city of Providence actually is one of the folk, one of the cities that signed on to the Community Policing Initiative in which President Barack Obama, a former President Barack Obama have launched. And it provides like a guideline around community policing and some of the things that you mentioned, having police officers in the community. Because when you think about community policing, the community is at the center. You know, those officers should be on foot patrol. We should also have officers who look like the people that they're serving. And also officers who live in the city in which they're serving because they're vested. That is their community. They have to live there. You know, when I was growing up in Providence as a little girl, you know, we have police officers, firefighters who lived on our street. I, you know, when we moved from Dartmouth Avenue, South Side to Washington, to the Washington Park neighborhood of South Side, we saw that. We saw city workers living in the city at the supermarkets. We saw our teachers there as well. Once the charter was lifted, then a lot of them moved out. And so it'd be great for us to have more incentives to keep our city workers, like our officers, in the community. And also when recruiting them, they look like the people they're serving. But we also need to ensure that we're investing in initiatives like the Nonviolent Institute so that we have community outreach workers who are intervening in conflicts so that they're preventing it from escalating to violence. And again, investing in the communities. Because if we make the necessary investments in the communities and we um and we address the root cause of the violence, um, our communities will be safer.
Well, I was talking to a New York police officer. We did an interview a little while back and he was saying that they have basketball games, football games with the community and they go out and play against community kids and stuff. That's the stuff that we want. Not that when you see a cop, you're afraid of them and you run away or you, you know, get nervous. If you do these things, like you said, Councilwoman, but also, you know, have sporting events, have cookouts, whatever it may be in that community, like you said, they're living in the community, they're part of that community. Then I think that there'll be a lot more trust. And if there's a gang in the community, there'll be trust by a person to go up and say, hey, we know that this is going down tonight. Be aware of that. That's how you develop that trust. So.
Absolutely. And trust is the key component, is 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 cultivating that trust.
Quick two audience questions. What is your biggest achievement in the city council?
Well, I think right now I am really proud of just the process for the ARP funds and how we were able to create um this model where we um, this community engagement model, where we brought people to the table. We went out, did some outreach to the community to really hear from the residents of how they want that funding to be um spent. Um, the other thing is in ensuring that we um were, you know, investing in our schools. I was part of the first initiative to fix our schools, so we can make sure that our kids are learning in safe um environments. Um, and also uh the the crisis response initiative, because those are things that the community has been calling for. And passing legislation that to support our businesses, particularly around um, um, the um pandemic, where some of them were feeling like they were, they were being taken advantage by some of our third party delivery services. Um, where they didn't have agreements with them. And so I worked on a piece of legislation at the state level, but also at the city level, excuse me, but also coordinated with the state. And we were able to pass it at the state level. So supporting our businesses, um, our small businesses. Um, making sure that our kids have the social emotional support in the schools, but also during a time of crisis. Um, being able to create this um, this model so that we can hear from the community how they want the funding to be spent.
Uh, last audience question, and this says only four minutes. So we, I I do wanna get in where people can help you as far as de- uh volunteer and donating and stuff. So uh, if this cuts out, I just wanna make sure we can get that. So listeners can help out if they want. So.
Well, they can go on votenerva.com, again votenerva.com. And you can sign up to volunteer, send an email at info@electnerva.com and join the movement and join Team Nerva.
And how do you see Providence in the, in your, in a future uh La Fortune administration?
Oh man, how I see Providence in the future, La Fortune um administration, I see Providence as a place where people are going to be proud to live in and in a place where our businesses can thrive and have the supports that they need. Our families feel safe walking through the streets. We have investments, um sustainability suspects investments. So we're creating the pillars so that we have a resi- um, a a resilient city for the future, an opportunity um for growth. Um, and housing, housing that is affordable. Um, and so that's an administration, um, you know, a near Villa Fortune administration. And also taking care of those basic necessities. I'm sick and tired of driving over potholes. Or just, you know, making sure that your trash is picked up on a regular basis. Um, and then um government can respond to you. But more important, government working for every resident, regardless of what neighborhood they live in. And a, in a administration that the the residents of Providence can trust.
Uh, Nerva La Fortune, again, nervaforprovidence.com. Definitely check it out. If you can throw her a couple of bucks, volunteer if you're in the neck, this neck of the woods. If not, throw her a couple of bucks. Let's try to get her in office. Nerva, thanks so much for your time today. Uh, good luck and we hope to have you on as mayor sometime soon.
Yes, thank you. From your mouth to God's ears, that's right. Have a wonderful rest of your afternoon.